Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City Council Study Session of June 3, 2021. The time is 3:02 PM. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be accessible by phone by dialing 253-215-8782, and then entering the meeting ID number that we posted on our website. Comments are allowed, comments are only allowed during designated portions of the meeting. To speak during the meeting, press the Raise Hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window, or press *9 on your phone. Please refrain from raising your hand until the mayor has announced that he has opened up the public comment portion of the meeting. Your name or the last three digits of your phone number will be called out when is your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press *6 to unmute yourself. All speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. We did receive one public comment, but if that person's listening, we're not, we're not accepting public, we're not accepting written comments on this meeting. We never talked about that. We did say several times that the public can allow to comment at the meeting. And if we did one, then we should have, we should have said that to allow them all. So we never said that. We said the public is involved. So if that person would like to say their public comment, that would be great. I'm going to give roll call right now. Councilmember Woo.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Abersold.
Here.
Councilmember Frannich.
Here.
Great. And this is Mayor Kikun from staff. We have Assistant Clerk Josh Stecker.
Here.
We have Public Works Director Jeff Langhorne.
Here.
And I think we have Molly Townsley, head clerk.
Here.
Thank you. Is there, I don't believe there's anyone else that I haven't called on. Okay. The discussion today is the Gig Harbor Canoe and Kayak Racing Team, the lease at Ansich Park. We had a council meeting, there was a second amendment, and then we wanted to discuss it at a study session. So we really knew what council wanted in order to bring it to a council bill that really had what we feel could be the majority of council support. I might add to this, there's been a couple comments. Just one second. Okay. I might add to this, there's been a couple comments I've seen asking, are the kayak team in the default of $166,000? That was due on April 9th or somewhere around down there. And they are not. Prior to that date, we actually had a study session with council, and we were, we actually at that point, we had a majority of council that was willing to reduce the amount to $100,000 in two different payments. And so that is what we brought forward at a council bill a couple council meetings ago. So we, we basically said that they don't need to pay that amount because there is, council is talking about lowering the payment, and we're going to get this solved very soon. So there's no reason to send an amount that is probably going to be changed. So it was at the city's direction of telling them that, you know, we, there's, there's meetings showing that council was supportive of reducing the amount. So now we're here today, and we've gone back and forth at council meetings, but I just want to let, for the record, state that they are not in default of any past payment because they knew that we were considering a different avenue. Any questions from council on that? Okay. We, we do know how the council, the amended council bill that kayak, that the canoe and kayak racing team gave to us at the last council meeting, and that's one reason why we're here today to discuss it. I did talk to Coach Aaron, and I talked to Alan Anderson. One thing Alan Anderson mentioned was the support of the community going way, way back, quite a long ways back, and maybe everyone wasn't aware of all this. So I think to set the stage as far as, you know, council to fully understand, you know, what they're voting on and maybe what some of the past has been, I'd like to let Alan Anderson be able to speak to that. So Josh, if you could unmute. We're not going to have a dialogue back and forth between the attendees and council, but we have told the, the club that they can talk and others too. So again, we're not going to bounce back and forth all the time. But again, it's important to hear from the people that this lease is affected to. Go ahead, Alan Anderson, if you want to speak. Not going to necessarily hold, I'm not going to hold the team to three minutes because they, we are discussing this with them. I am going to hold individuals to three minutes, but I'm also not going to want you to just go on for, for more than five minutes or anything like that, because you have several attendees from the kayak, and it's not to do five or 10 minutes from each person. So please, because I'm allowing you to do that, please be respectful of that. Go ahead, Alan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I did not, I did not expect to speak today. You know, Aaron and, Aaron and Kirsten are heading that up, and fortunately, I've had a chance to speak to, I think, all of you, except for Mr. Heinz in the last 48 hours. And everybody knows I'm a storyteller, so I just wanted to tell the story of the history of the team because they're going all the way back to Gretchen Wilbert, and then Chuck Hunter, and then Joe Guernsey, and their respective staffs. I just thought it would be helpful for you to have all that. And I shared all that already, and I hope it was well received. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to have, you know, again, I think it's good to get a little feedback from the group themselves, so go ahead, Aaron.
Sorry about the delay there. Our thing switched over to panelists. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So, you know, what I wanted to say at the last meeting was, at the first of the year, you know, we were approached by the city for a slightly revised dock structure, one that would cost the city and our fundraising efforts less money. We went over that with city staff. We talked about it, and it seemed like it would work. It would work for both the city, the residents of the city, and our needs. So we agreed to that. At that time, the agreement, we thought that the bid would come in such that the city would be paying for that dock. Now, like happens with a lot of projects, once you put a project out to bid, it sometimes comes back higher, and that's, that's been the case here. So we had an agreement, I thought, for $100,000 that we would be donating to the city above the $60,000 that we've already donated. Our board met, discussed, and agreed on that, and we returned that to the council. At the May 10th meeting, unbeknownst to us and surprising to us, our term was changed from three five-year terms to one five-year term, and that's really problematic for our organization for a number of reasons. One of which is that we need stability. A nonprofit like ours operates best with organizational stability. So the longer the term, the better for us. Now, I want it very clear, we're not asking to, to just be magically given 15 years. We're asking for the right to rent from the city for 15 years. So we're not asking for really anything too special here, other than some of that organizational stability. So that's the crux of the letter that we sent on, I think it was a Sunday before the last council meeting. And so we're here to discuss and address concerns regarding that. So in our view, we're going to do the 100,000. In fact, we'd like to, we think we're going to be pretty successful with our grant opportunities, and we'd like to offer more money in exchange for getting back that 15 years. So that's, that's kind of where we are now, and I'm happy to discuss and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. We only have three panelists, so we're just going to keep going on to the other panelists. You, you know, that sounds great. Kirsten, do you have anything to offer? Otherwise, I'm going to Mike Kitchen, which is a board member of the kayak club. Okay? Mike, are you, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I have no further comments. I was more listening in, but I have no, nothing to add to what Alan and Kirsten and Frannich.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't know exactly who you are, Todd, but we have Todd Cole, who is on, is attending our meeting. And again, I, sorry, I don't know who you are, but Todd, if you'd like to state something, you're more than welcome.
No, I'm here to listen and just support the team and the council's efforts to grow the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess I opened up, I opened up the, the public comment. I'm going to close the public comment right now for the time being. I am just really mostly facilitating this. I am supportive of the kayak group, and I'll let Jeff talk about it, and then we'll hear from council. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say a few words, provide a little bit of more history. Of course, you all have read the memo that was provided to you for this study session, and you know that the intent of today's meeting is to solve the three key issues that were outlined in the memo related to Amendment Number Two. These are the donation amount for Amendment Number Two, the total duration of the lease, and whether or not we're going to have renewals, extensions, et cetera. And if their, council has any interest in adding into the amendment any remedies in case the donations are not provided in the timeline outlined in the amendment. So those are the three key tasks that we're here to talk about today. I do want to set the stage. I know Alan provided, knows a lot of the history, as do many of the canoe and kayak race team representatives, but I just wanted to provide a history, some of it in pictures from how we got to where we are, starting back on Resolution 949, which I know we all have read back and forth. Just want to remember that that was adopted originally in December of 2013. I can bring up the resolution if you want to see, but there was a table at the very end of Resolution 949 that described that the construction of the human-powered craft and lockers received a priority ranking of number one, and it noted for that ranking that it, the, the site would be used for general public use with potential lease of a portion of the structure to the team. And then, as we proceeded in time, in 2014, the council at that time supported the city applying to RCO for a grant. It was, it was an ALIA grant, Aquatic Lands Enhancement Account Grant, ALIA. And in that application to RCO back in 2014, the team wasn't directly the focus of the grant or the presentation. It was more just the community as a whole, but the team was recognized in the, in the grant application process. And I'm just going to share my screen briefing with you and show you, there were 50 slides that were presented to RCO as part of the 2014 ALIA grant application. And I'm going to show you just some of the slides here, because some of them were just tables, charts, and some of them were pictures of people in sailboats and all sorts of human-powered craft, but I just want to show it. So here's the cover for the ALIA grant application. These are just some pictures, again, that showed the human-powered craft and the need that was identified during the ALIA process. And whenever you see a canoe and kayak, now there are also, again, paddle boards, there was sailboats, but whenever you see a canoe and kayak, it was all about the Gig Harbor Canoe and Kayak Race Team. Here's what the site looked like in 2012 when the city acquired it, just as a history, and this was noted in the ALIA grant application. Here's what the original ALIA grant was proposing as part of the site layout. And you can see there was restrooms, utility, and then storage units below view platform. So this was the initial concept, and it says in here, storage for small boats. Now, the ALIA grant wasn't going to provide the storage for small boats. That's why it says city-funded. And in the grant application and the grant agreement itself, it says that the city is going to provide the funding for those, for those boats. Again, there's a street level view, the upper level. Here's a cross-section of what that concept looked like back in 2014. Tell me if you want to go back, or if you want me to stop. Here were the supporting organizations. Again, Resolution 959 should have said Resolution 949, but ignore that one. But there's the canoe and kayak race team as one of the supporting organizations. And then here's one of the pictures that they used to say that this, this is, this is a bad way to store kayaks. And so this was part of the impetus to, to get these kayaks out of an existing city park and put them into a storage building that was here that's proposed as part of Ansich Waterfront Park. And then here was the last slide. It showed, again, the team itself. So that was the presentation, and that's, we ended up receiving a $500,000 ALIA grant from RCO for the construction of the uplands of the site. Again, it was, the ALIA grant was not supposed to be used for the construction of the boat storage, but it could be used for the building and the view platform and other things. And we received that, and that helped pay for the total development costs of the upland project that we now have for us today. And then I'm going to move on to Amendment Number One. So Amendment Number One for the Gig Harbor Canoe and Kayak Race Team lease at Ansich was focusing on the changes that happened since the original lease started in 2017. At the time, when Amendment Number One was being discussed, this was early in 2020, right around the end of 2019 or early into 2020. It focused on, on the setting timelines for the kayak team to provide donations. And that's where these magic numbers of $167,000 being due in three different, or three different installments of donations through the city, because we were trying to verify that we could actually receive the money in a timely manner to either pay, help pay for the building, or pay for it and pay the city back as the city can, or sorry, the float system, not the building, the float system. And so that was the impetus of Amendment Number One. However, we all know that the, based on the changes in the project scope and the project costs that came around in mid-2020, that we were looking at the 2021 budget at the end of 2020, and both parties, the team and the city, understood through the adoption of the 2021 budget that the terms of Amendment Number One were really no longer valid. And so that brought us to February of 2021, when the costs were more established, and it wasn't the original budgeted amount of $400,000 that was moving forward. It was now a new number provided by DCG Consulting Group, the engineers that are doing the design work, and they gave us a number of, I think it was $730,000 or something. And we recognized that, hey, this is more than what we have budgeted. Let's have a conversation with council about how we're going to fund this. And at the February 10th study session, council said, okay, well, we recognize that this is going to cost us more. We need to actually go back to the canoe and kayak race team and ask them for, at least to fund a portion of this community paddler stock. And that's where the number $100,000 was established. And this direction in February further reiterated that the first donation deadline that was identified in Amendment Number One, and it, it recognized that the amendment was behind in catching up with the changes that everybody had been talking about up to now. So in order to eliminate any future confusion on the contract itself, on the lease itself, this is where staff has come in, and we want to strongly encourage as part of the discussion today that the commencement date of the contract or of the lease and any amendment to the lease through Amendment Number Two, that the commencement date of the initial term that's identified in Section 4.1 of the lease would stay unchanged. We don't want to change that commencement date. That would add confusion going forward, I believe. And in talking to Daniel Kenny, city attorney, he also agrees with me that by changing the commencement date, that's going to cause confusion. And so what maybe we, staff is recommending and council focus on today is if we're going to change any dates that we focus on Section 4.2, which again is extensions, and then talk about any remedies we might have going forward. So that's what I just wanted to do, I want to provide some background in where we are today and what we hope to accomplish today. Hand it over to the mayor or whomever to answer or provide questions or go from here.
Thank you. Councilmember Frannich.
Just for the record, I'm not here to relitigate Resolution 949. I think Mr. Langhorne picked and choose what he wanted to bring out, out of that table that was there. In that table, it all says that it was not appropriate for the home base for the kayak club. So just wanted to have that on the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, I appreciated Mayor your comments and Mr. Langhorne's comments. I talked to Daniel this morning as well, because I like the idea of whatever term we decide ultimately, and I like the term of 15 years. I like that to essentially begin when the team is able to actually use, the peer and the public is actually able to use the peer. But Daniel said that we, like you, you mentioned, Mr. Langhorne, we want to keep the date of the contract the same, but in Section 4.2, Daniel and Mr. Langhorne can come up with language that essentially will give the team 15 years from the date in which they're able to actually use the peer, which hopefully is later this year or early next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Any other feedback from council? Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. So I'm obviously very supportive of the team. I like the 15 years. And one thing I think that could help along the way is that maybe a compromise from what some other people are not supportive of the 15 years. I think we could have, I spoke to Daniel about this this morning. I think we could have a sort of checkup after the 10-year period, not change the 15 years at all, the 15 years stay there, but after 10 years, there would be a checkup with the council at that time and with the canoe and kayak team, racing team. And perhaps one of the issues that could also be determined after a checkup, Daniel said this happens a lot with long-term things. You have a checkup to make sure everything is running correctly, just as they're supposed to, to make sure everything is being done by both parties, as they indeed are supposed to. And that actually, at the 10-year mark, we could establish a renegotiation during this, during this period, and perhaps one of the issues on the table, or perhaps the issue on the table, would be a possible rate increase, not larger than 20%. And that could be one of the things we could look at again at 10 years. And what, and what that means is that, and that 20% is not written anywhere, it's just sort of a number I put out of the sky, but, so you would sit down and talk about that everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, what has happened in the economy, what has happened to the environment and financial. And this would give the council at that time the opportunity to see if they want to have a rate increase, that there's nothing that says that has to be there, but to go over things and to look at the possibility of a monthly rate increase. So that would give the kayak team their surety of the 15 years. And for those people who are, who think perhaps things are a little out of whack, that would also give the council at that time, whoever's on the council in 10 years, the opportunity to look at things and to make sure the lease is being adhered to by both parties, by the team and by the city. And, and if, if they want to, if that council at that time wants to look at a negotiation for a rate increase or not, this is not a done and stone. It just says that's a possibility that could be, that could be happening. So I think that's something that we, we need to talk about. Thank you.
Okay. I would be hesitant for council to pass something like that, because I work with leases a lot more than the council does. And so what I'm actually going to let you know is, we already do a lot of what Councilmember Woo is talking about with those leases. We, what she's mentioning of doing, we actually don't do for Wild Watch, we actually don't do for the Boat Shop, and we don't do for the Chamber of Commerce. So the Boat Shop has a lease, I believe, until 2032. So that was like a 40-year lease, and there's no, there's no checks on them. Same thing with the chamber, same thing with Wild Watch. But what we, what we do do, which is a city administration protocol, I guess you could say, is we make sure that they're doing just what Councilmembers Woo mentioned. We make sure that they're giving us a credit. There was a time where I, the chamber was behind on showing the, the information that was in their lease. And so I brought it to their attention, and I said, hey, you know, you're supposed to be turning in periodical statements, letting us know how many people are coming into the tourist center and everything like that. And, and then they did that. And so we've also done that with the Boat Shop very recently. We've also, I actually sat down with Lindsay from Wild Watch about three years ago and made sure, and actually I learned a lot of how that arrangement was from, from sitting down. So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but we already do these checks and balances periodically, because we, we open up those lease files and make sure. Is that correct, Jeff?
Well, I, we do. We do review the, the lease terms, and we review whether or not they, each lessee is providing the public benefit, which is typically a part of the lease, on an annual basis. That's a big reason for the annual report. I don't know if there's any lease we have where we would go back and currently and review the actual lease amount partway through a lease. It would be either, it would be from the start of the lease to the end of the lease, that term and that amount is established as part of the lease. And for this one, recall that the lease rate or the rental rate of the facility is adjusted annually based on, I think it's CPI.
Yeah. Right. So it's already adjusted, and one thing I think we need to do is we need, we need to make sure we're consistent with our nonprofits and with our special interest groups, and we don't, we don't start picking and choose how we want to work on one versus another. That's important. Councilmember Heinz.
Yes. Let me make sure I'm on. On the donation part of the discussion, if I recall correctly, and I'm sure I do, any money is so-called donated actually goes toward a credit for future lease, monthly lease payments. And I think I'm correct on that. So what we've got here, a situation where any amount that's put in the upfront, okay, it's strictly going to go toward lease payments. It's not a donation, it's not a gift, it's forward lease payment. In this era of low interest rates, the time value of money is not very high. And basically, I pretty much discount it, whether it's 100,000, 50,000, 150,000, it's not a big deal. It really isn't. It's, it's a very, very small number. The interest is going to be so small that is, let's say, given up during that period with a significant down payment. It just isn't, it just isn't a big deal. Therefore, where I'm leading is that the, the time of the extensions seems to be the big issue in my mind. seems to be the, the, the big issue in my mind. The way the contract is written right now, you'd have to presuppose all the possible things that could go awry and make sure you've got them in that contract. I don't think there's any provision, and I haven't seen anything from Daniel Kenny that says otherwise, that we can in any way open this thing up if something goes awry. Okay. And there's, by the way, there is great potential for this thing to go awry, particularly from the city's perspective. Okay. Keep in mind, we were just approached by the Parks Commission on how do we dole out storage spaces on the public side. And they're already into a lottery proposal. Oh, that's how we're going to do it. Keep in mind, and some of you may not know, this thing is twenty-seven hundred square feet in total. The kayak club currently has fifteen hundred of that square feet. So that leaves twelve hundred square feet for the general public. Will that have, will that be a problem in the future? I don't know. But all of the signs would suggest that at some point, it's going to become an issue. We don't have a mechanism right now to even approach the canoe and kayak club and say, hey, you know, guys, we we got this little problem called, we have a bunch of taxpayers out there with kayaks that can't get in. And perhaps we should rethink some of these things. And by the way, whether it's certain time periods of the year, I don't know. But I think this thing is, is it's a major problem. At fifteen years, I think it becomes a huge problem. I think it's even a problem of five years. At fifteen, we're out there in no man's land. Okay. Will kayaks be popular here in Gig Harbor? They certainly are. Will stainless pallets absolutely small sailboats? Yep, sure will. So I think from our perspective, at least as I see it, this is the biggest issue, is the time span of any extension. Okay. Or, or a mechanism built into this thing that can address things that haven't been addressed to this point. And there's, they're somewhat speculative, but not really. How, how do we do that? How do we approach that? And like I said, fifteen is a heck of a lot longer than five. So I'll stop right there.
Hey, I'm going to call on council members that have not spoken yet. Councilmember Rodenberg.
I have a statement for posterity. I agree with the mayor. And I think that we should treat all the nonprofits equally. I know that most of those nonprofits have twenty or forty-year leases, and some of their rents are a dollar a year. So I think that the, and there is a mechanism. I understand Councilman Woo's point about looking at this in ten years. But there is a mechanism already in the lease draft that allows for price increases dependent upon the CPI. And I don't think we could write every single thing into the lease that would occur, would be speculating on five hundred different things that might happen. I think I'm happy with the amendment that the kayak club has proposed, and I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Woo.
Oh, that's fine. I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Farnes.
As far as the other publicly owned buildings that the city leased is out, they, they are not new construction buildings. Trying to find a group that would have taken over the boat shop, the Scansy Net Shed, the Eden Boathouse, is substantially different than building a new building for storage space. So I don't see any comparison. I completely agree with Councilmember Himes. A fifteen-year term is way too long. We, two meetings ago, we had a six to zero vote for one five-year extension, which in my opinion, gives the best representation to the general public in five years from now, whoever, whosever's on the council, they can choose to extend the lease with the kayak club, or as I believe, there is going to be quite a demand from the general taxpayers in the name of equity to all citizens. I believe that the five-year term that we passed, six to zero, at a, two council meetings ago, is what is the fairest thing to the taxpayers. And mayor, we are not, this is just a workshop. We are not going to be taking any action. Is that correct?
That's correct. What we're going to do, which I'm writing people's names down right now, is I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, even though we're not taking any action, we do need to see what the majority, this doesn't, it's not a legal vote, but we do need to know the majority of council so we can provide a bill at the next council meeting is the goal. So we're going to, we're going to ask, it's the only way to do it. We, you know, we already did that many meetings ago, several times. So we need to, to get a consensus of what council wants that bill to look like. So what I'll be doing is I'll be asking just a show of hands of council that wants to proceed with the, the amendment lease that the kayakers provided to the city and council. And if the majority want that, then we'll go, then we'll prepare it at the council meeting. If the majority don't, then we'll go back to discussion and figure out where, what they do want. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Hines.
Yeah, along those same lines, I guess I would challenge the canoe and kayak club. If there's a way to alleviate the fears that I just expressed, I'm all ears. Call if there's a way to to get it in there. Your legal representation and our city attorney, I'd be very receptive to see what we come up, come up with. And by the way, I don't think it's money. I hope I've made that point clear. I don't think the issue here is money. I think the issue here is the length of the contract.
Councilmember Hines, can you say that in a, I'm sorry, but you went on, I got, I got lost. Can you say that in a simpler format of what you asked?
What I'm asking is if there is a way to come up with a way to address the fears that I expressed relative to a fifteen-year contract for things other than money, okay, to be quite honest. I'm all ears. I'd love to see it. I'd love to see it. But right now, there is no way to address anything that's unexpected that comes up at all. And one of them is not so unexpected right now. And that's the issue of storage of other residents of Gig Harbor.
Okay, well, I'll let Aaron, again, Jeff and I and Councilmember Rodenberg have already said that we don't do this to others. And you could have fears with any other leases that you have. So the same thing could be true with anything. So I don't know how I would address it. But yes, Aaron, if you want to mention that or say something to that, you had your hand up.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to say something. This is Kirsten. So Councilmember Hines, I can't speak to how you create a contract that addresses, you know, any number of potential negative contingencies moving forward. But what I can say is that the city, both Katrina Knutson and Nicole Jones Vogel, conducted research on, basically market, market research on what demand is for public storage space in similar facilities in our area. And that went into factoring the division of space in this building. And I don't, I don't want to put Jeff on the spot, but there were whole presentations to councils. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure if that was before you were on council, Councilmember Hines. But there are whole presentations to council on that research and what they anticipate the demand to be, not the interest survey. That's something very different and brings a very different sort of level of participation in numbers. But I would, I guess, maybe if Jeff has anything to add to that about some of that actual data that was collected in making these determinations on space division.
The other thing I wanted to mention is something actually that Councilmember Woo brought up. It's been a many, many meetings. So I'm not sure you remember, but something that when we went through the area recognition in Scansy Park, where we cleaned up that area and put in some rock to avoid it turning into a mud pit, I believe it was Councilmember Woo who said maybe that could stay for use for general public use. We're going to be vacating that area, and I don't see a problem with, it's a pretty nice area back there now that could be used during summer months for public storage if that's was interest to the city. That's just a side idea.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. I'll just respond to Kirsten's comments. Yeah, she's correct. It was Katrina Knutson and Nicole Jones Vogel who collect that data. I don't recall the data itself. I'm sorry. But I do know that we are about to embark, as was noted at the Public Works Committee meeting last month, that we're about to embark on another survey just for interest alone and mostly relating to what type of human-powered craft would be stored in there. But right now, the city doesn't have any new data to show whether or not there's going to be a huge demand for storage or minimal. I mean, a lot of that will be set by the price that is established by a council. If they, if the, if the council sets a price that is very low compared to what others are willing to pay, then yeah, we're going to have a lot of demand. But if it's, if it's market rate or higher, then it's going to really level out that demand. So we won't know until we actually open it and set our terms and set the rates.
Thank you. Councilmember Woo.
So that was sort of my point with the six-years checkup. And while, while we may do this every year, it's not really in the lease at any point or an amendment. And so it would just be written someplace so that we knew that these things were going to be discussed in ten years. It does not eliminate any possibility of getting rid of the fifteen-year lease with a, with a kayak team, because they need that, and I believe it. And but I just wanted to have a, have a time set so that this would, everybody knew this would be discussed specifically. So, so anything that might come down the pike in the middle, Councilmember Hines, we know that this would be discussed then at the end of, of ten years. So that was the purpose of this. And that was the purpose of this. Thanks.
So then a question for your Councilmember Hike, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Woo. Do we go back to all the other leaseholders we have, and we do the same thing to them? Do we go to the chamber right now? Do we go to Wildwatch? Do we go to the boat shop and we tell them that we want to amend each of their lease to do mandatory checkups?
So I, I believe that you have been trying to get us to raise the rent on the chamber for some time.
The lease was up.
So then you just mentioned, should we go back to them then and put this in their lease as well? Actually, I think it's not a bad thing going forward. If we're going to give long-term leases, Dan, I talked with Daniel. He said this is done all the time. If you have a long-term lease, you have checkups, you mandatory checkups that are put in the lease, that you go back and make sure everything is being done, that there's nothing that fell out of heaven, that's going to cost anybody any money. Or, but it can be discussed at that time. It does not have to do with the length of the lease. So, so and yes, I think if we're going to have, I think it's not a bad idea, just to, instead of giving forty-year leases really-nilly, to have checkups in there. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But I, though, going forward, going forward.
Right. I'm just saying that that's what we already do. That's what I don't understand. We already do that in our leases.
Is it in the lease that it will be negotiated and you sit down and you talk about it in ten years? Is that in the lease?
It's in the lease that, that there's requirements for them to provide to the city every single year.
Okay. Guess I missed that. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, other council comments. Okay, you got it. Councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, I just want someone to clarify for me. Someone, I can't remember who it was, maybe it's Councilmember Woo or Councilmember Denson, talking about, I guess, the, the language in the contract, our lease agreement regarding starting dates, and how if we change one thing, it messes up something somewhere else. Am I, did I get that understanding correctly? Or can someone clarify for that for me, please?
Jeff.
Sure. Yeah, this, this is based on conversations with city attorney Daniel Kenny. Right now, the original lease from 2017 has two sections in it that relate to dates. One is the, essentially what I'm calling the commencement date of the lease. It says that the, the team has to occupy and commence the lease before, I think it was July one, or maybe it was June thirty of 2019. And so they did that. I think it was like June twenty-eighth of 2019. And so that's when the date, the initial term of the lease began. So I'm calling that the commencement date. And so what Daniel Kenny has indicated is that we shouldn't be talking about going back and changing that initial, the commencement date of the lease, the initial start date of the lease. We shouldn't say, okay, well, let's, let's move that start date forward to whenever the community paddler's dock receives its certificate of occupancy. What he is recommending, that we instead look at section four point two of the lease, which is extensions, and say, okay, well, let's just say the, the initial commencement lease of the lease has already started, the initial term has already started. Let's say that now council should be talking about starting the extension date on the date of the certificate of occupancy of the community paddler's dock, for example. And that's one thing that we keep talking about. So let's talk about when we start that extension date. So is it five years, ten years, fifteen years from when the certificate of occupancy of the community paddler's dock is, receives a certificate of occupancy? Anyway, so that, that's what we're talking about. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, so then let me follow up with another question with that, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. So in the, in the language that the kayakers club has provided to us about, the initial term of this lease shall be from June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and the date opens, opens, or the date the city opens, human-powered watercraft float of Ansich Waterfront Park, that language doesn't blow it up?
No, because it says the initial term date stays the same at June twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. We would probably revise that a little bit. But, but again, that's, that's having to do with section four point one. And Daniel Kenny has been focusing more on what four point two would look like, which is extensions.
Now, I, I'm not seeing a four point two. I just see a four, and it says four point two is, shall be deleted in its entirety.
Yeah. And so that's, that's something that I think the key is that we, we, today's meeting, we want to talk about if, if this is where the council is going, because I get that sense that if we're going to be talking about how many years from the date the community paddler's dock is open and available to the public, which I'm going to say means certificate of occupancy is issued, how many years from that date should this lease amendment move forward? And then we, staff, city attorney can come back to council with a lease amendment that changes the proper sections of the lease accordingly.
Okay, so a little bit more. So was Daniel recommending that we acknowledge the original year lease, and then we go fifteen forward? Or can you?
Time, he wasn't recommending any timeframe. He was just recommending that we don't go back and change the initial term language.
Okay, okay. So that means if we, if we kept the date the same, we would actually be wanting, and they wanted fifteen years, we'd want to be giving them seventeen or something like that.
Well, or you, or if technically that's, some, some council members think seventeen is too much, then say it's twelve day, or twelve years or thirteen years from the date certificate of occupancy of the community paddler's dock is provided. And then it still makes fifteen, however you want to do the math, but.
Okay, so that sounds great. It looks like what we, we've kind of, we need to keep the date the same. It's just how many years the council chooses. Got it. Right. Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, thank you. So I was just looking at that section four point one. So that, the, the initial term of the lease shall be from June twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, until the date the city opens the human-powered watercraft floats at Ansich Waterfront Park. And then where it says thereafter, there shall be a, right now, it says fifteen-year renewal term. And then where it says thereafter, there shall be a, right now it says fifteen year renewal term. That's really, that's the issue that is at hand, right, is this fifteen years. It's what I seem to be hearing from uh some. Council members that that might be too long. What I wanted to ask the canoe and kayak club is what um, you know, if, if. If we're trying to strike a compromise of any kind, would changing that to ten years? Still allow your donors to be comfortable with, you know, that length of time? You know, I'm, I'm just, it's like going between five and ten, the middles, or five and fifteen, middle, the middle's ten. So. If there's a compromise trying to be struck potentially on the, on the terms, the lease term. I'm sorry, the, the length of the lease, would ten years be sufficient? For your investors, for your team, as in terms of stability? Um, you know, I'm, I'm extremely supportive of the team. I really enjoyed hearing. Alan's history of the team and everything that has happened since its conception and. It's a phenomenal team. I know a lot of the children that are on the team that have, that have participated. They are. Amazing kids and their families are um, have really benefited from your, from your team, from. From the community, the sense of family that they get from being on this team, being a part of it. Um, I do believe that the events that you bring to the city are advantageous, you know, for economic vitality for. Um, you know, bringing in people to our town, bringing um tourism to our town. You know, there's, there's a lot of good things that you guys do. Um, along with the boat shop, along with the Harbor History Museum, you know. Nonprofits do need a sense of stability in order to retain investors, in order to have, you know, confidence moving forward. I understand that you do need some buy in from the municipality that you're working with in order to. Fulfill those things and make sure that everyone's comfortable doing that. So. I guess um, and I, I see that you've raised the dollar amount to donate a hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred thousand. Um, would, would ten years be sufficient? I guess that would be my question. Um, to be revisited after that ten years by the, kind of what councilmember Woo was saying, but. Just having that be established in the lease from the beginning as a ten year lease versus a fifteen year lease. And then see where, where, where we are at that point. So that would be my question to you guys. And then my question to Jeff, I guess, would be. Um, you mentioned that council would determine a price for public storage. At what point would council be doing that? Um, and then. When will we know what the demand is from, from the survey that you're gonna be doing? Does that come before we have to determine a price or, or after?
Well, uh, oh, uh, can I speak to the last question? So um, we're gonna be putting out the survey sometime probably in July or August. Um, that survey though is not gonna, I mean, it's gonna specific, more focus on what type of boats are people going to wanna store. Uh, in the building so that we can account for that when we establish the rack system. So that we can build the proper percentage or proportion of paddleboard storage versus canoe storage versus kayak storage. So it won't give, it, it won't give us a good sense of what the demand is, and that's gonna be hard to do. For a while. I don't think that the city will have a good idea of what the demand will be until we get into this a year or maybe more. Um, and then uh, as far as when is staff going to come to council to request uh input uh on the fees that are charged? I'm guessing that's gonna be in September of this year, maybe October, right before we put the terms together. I mean, I'm. Mayor's waiting for me to uh put together the draft terms and, and, and all this data, and so I need to get that to him, but. Um, it's gonna be a little bit before we assemble the data enough where we can provide a recommendation for what that fee would be.
Okay, cuz I do, I do respect councilmember Franch and councilmember Heims' concerns about the taxpayers having access to this park. Um, to be able to use, you know, as well as the kayakers. Um, I do like. Uh, Aaron Houston's suggestion of po- potentially allowing those storage racks to stay at Scansey um for public storage as well. That's, I think that's a great idea. People really like to see the kayaks there. I haven't had a single person say they should be moved or they think it's off putting, you know. Visually or anything like that. So I think that is a wonderful solution to possibly additional public storage. And I'm assuming we would charge a fee for that storage space as well. Um, maybe, maybe not. I don't know if that's included in this discussion, but. I, so that leads me, I guess, then to my question for the, the kayak team about the. About the, the term starting at ten years to be renegotiated after ten years within the new council.
If that. I might, uh, I, I might add, I'm not supportive of two parks being used solely by the kayakers. Um, uh, it's, you know, it, it's one thing for a summer camp, but to have storage at two places. I have told the team that if they're gonna have kayaks they don't use for three, six months, waterfront storage. Should be out in the field somewhere else. They don't use all, and, and we shouldn't be storing kayaks. At two locations of our parks when others could be using the parks. Uh, you know, so. Um, I, I, I think that's not fair to other special interest groups, but we're getting off subject that. We're trying to decide to go ahead, Erin, with her question about the ten year.
Yeah, and uh, just thank you, uh, Mayor, and, and thank you, actually several councilmembers spoken since I last spoke. Thanks so much for the support. Really appreciate it. Just a clarification on the last bit. I'm not sure, Mayor, I, maybe I was misunderstanding. I meant that we would be vacating Scansey. We would not be in both Scansey and Ansich, so.
That's what I understood, so I don't know.
I think that's what councilmember Markley intended too.
Yes, I thought that the Scansey storage could remain for public taxpayer use only.
I thought you said you wanted them to stay where they were as well.
No, 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 I meant the racks and the.
The racks.
Put in some rocks. We put in some rocks and some improvements there to kinda help that area not turn into a mud pit and kinda. Keep it nice and I, my thought, and again, I'd love to take credit for that idea cuz I actually think it's a good idea, but I think it was councilmember Woo who came up with that. It was about a year ago. When we were first discussing making those improvements, I think she made the comment that that might be later be used once we moved. So that, I think, is a, is a pretty uh good idea. Let me speak to councilmember Markley's uh discussion about ten versus fifteen years. There's a, a couple of reasons. One is when you're applying for grants and trying to get fundraising, the longer the term, the better. A lot of these places wanna see fifteen, twenty, thirty. They wanna know that their donation to our organization, to this project, is going to mean lasting service. And as a nonprofit that serves children. Budgets, monthly budgets are hard to do and finding out where we're gonna be is hard to do. And in ten years, I don't know where we would go. I mean, there's no, there's no other place that we would go other than back to Scansey Park to stay operational. So uh, the longer the lease, the better for us for fundraising. I'll mention something that's near and dear to my heart, just because we've witnessed some pretty extreme success lately. Um, I wanna mention that our athlete, Nevin Harrison, uh, did win trials. She will be going to the Olympics in Tokyo. And uh, we're very proud of our involvement in her training. She's, she was here for two years. And uh, we're all gonna be watching. I don't know if anyone was able to hear the recent NPR story that aired yesterday. Um, which was really cool, all about her, but um, it does have to do a little bit with the Olympics. Uh, ten years gets us through two Olympic cycles, fifteen, almost four cycles. So that's an important consideration for us. We would like to be recognized as a center of excellence for Olympic training. Which is exciting and to those people who might be going, I don't want five hundred people there every day. I get that, that's not going to happen, but it's a more of a recognition of excellence for, for our organization and also it's a point of pride for the city of Gig Harbor, the maritime city. Um, the last point I wanna mention is this. Re- re- recall that we're not getting the five, the extra, another five years beyond the ten years for free. We're just asking to have the right to rent it. When we go fundraising, we wanna fundraise the maximum amount. So by allowing us the three, five year terms. That gives us the most incentive to raise the most money possible to donate towards a project. So i- i- I think that it's in the city's interest as well as our interest to, to, to fundraise like crazy. And I think that that helps get the project paid for uh with as little uh money out of pocket from the city. So that's the, so Olympics, operational stability, um, and also I think it's a win-win when we fundraise big.
Thank you, Aaron. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, a couple things, Aaron. I, my wife and I both read the story on your athlete and we're both thrilled, so congratulations on that. Uh, the, the idea of this amendment is to uh lease that building for storage. I think it's only uh. Why should it start any other day then? The day that you start getting value out of it, uh, and not some other day. So I agree with the. Uh, statement about starting the lease day that it's open to the public. Uh, and getting back to the ten versus the fifteen, I don't see why we should penalize the kayak club when all the other nonprofits. Uh, that are renting buildings from the story, from the city, have longer leases. Uh, and secondly, I guess Jeff and I could talk about this offline, Jeff, but. Uh, the different kinds of human powered watercraft are gonna be in there. I think uh, a convertible racking design could be used, so you could. Uh, change the design depending upon the requirement or uh the fat or what's new and. Are there more paddleboards than there are kayaks or more canoes? So I think it could be adjustable racking, not just permanent welded. Uh, so again, I support the fifteen year and uh. Let's get this done.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, uh, I would just remind councilmember Rodenberg that. There was no other new museum coming up that would detract from. An investment in the existing museum or in the boat shop or any of these other places. So to compare this situation that we've got with just the example I threw out there. Um, it, it's, it's non comparable, okay? We don't have a situation there with the boat shop where. The fact that we're approving the boat shop and we're approving capacity for the boat shop. It would, it'd be like putting a, a, a limit on the number of citizens that could visit the boat shop, okay? And that's what we're doing right now on the storage thing. So uh, I think the comparison there is not quite right.
Thank you. Councilmember Heims, councilmember Denson.
Yes, I'm supportive of the, the fifteen years as well. And the only thing that I will add to the comments of councilmember Rodenberg and Woo, who I agree with both of them. Is that initially, when the canoe and kayak team established this lease with council and it was the council be, before I came on. Um, the term was fifteen years. It wasn't anticipated that it was gonna take us so long to build the pier. So the fifteen year period from, of use was what the, and is what the canoe and kayak team has counted on for so many years. We're just now shifting the date to still, still complying and still holding true to our agreement. We're just shifting the date to the date in which. It's actually gonna be open for use for them. So I, I think it's fair. That they've counted on having these fifteen years of stability. This is what they've told their donors and I love the idea of going through four Olympic cycles and getting that recognition for, for Gig Harbor and for the team and. I think this is what previous councils have agreed on as well, and we're just making sure that, that it actually happens now that we are planning on breaking ground on the, or breaking water, I guess. Oh, thanks. All right, I gotta mute this year.
Okay, I, I, one, um, so Jeff did, so back to, okay, we're talking fifteen years, but count them. Daniel mentioned that we had to, that it was best to start with our original date, so. Um, so if, 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 if we do fifteen, are we doing, is that, is that then a twelve or thirteen? Or can we have the fifteen starting from when it's open? What did you feel from Daniel?
The, Daniel didn't have an input on, on how long the term would be. It was just when we set that date, whatever that fifteen years is, let's make it from. The date that it is open to the public and um, and, and not, and not go back and change when the commencement date is.
So if you do that, can you, can you still do three, five years and just say, you know, but it was started? Can you keep the original date and just say we're doing three, five new terms from when it opened? And so in a sense, it's a seventeen year, but you're starting the first, the, the next five. Can, did, does that, do you recall that that's possible?
It, it is possible, and I think that those types of details are something that Daniel and I can work on when we develop the uh final version of the amendment number two. Really, I guess what I would be asking for is, let's just assume that this uh community paddler's dock is gonna receive its certificate of occupancy this fall or this winter. Um, let's just, let's just make math easy. Let's say it's January one, twenty twenty-two. So is, does council, is, does the majority of council desire that it be uh this lease uh amendment number two extend the lease all the way to. January one of twenty thirty-seven. That's fifteen years from the date certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So we, we, we'll set it, we'll set an end date and then we'll work backwards and we'll provide the language accordingly.
Right, okay, thank you. And um, I'd like to ask that question right now of council, so. I, I'm not saying, I'm not asking you how you're gonna vote, um, because that's like voting now, but I'm asking you. Um, you know, would you like us to prepare for the, as soon as, you know, hopefully next council bill, maybe. Uh, council, council meeting, I think so, but would you like us to prepare uh what Jeff just mentioned? Uh, an amended lease for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and three, five year terms. Um, commencing on the time that it's open, that it's open. I'm still putting in perspective that the original lease date would go back, but it would give, it would be fifteen years from, yeah, until twenty thirty-seven. So I'd like to, again, I'm not asking for how you're gonna vote. I'm just asking if that's what you would like us to bring to the council meeting. And then if I have enough, we'll do that. If I don't, we'll find out what you do want brought. Uh, councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, considering there may be other options for the public to use additional storage at Scansey.
Okay, and then now I get what you meant and I like that. Uh, councilmember Woo.
Yes.
Great. Councilmember Denson.
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Abersole.
Yes.
Councilmember Franch.
I'll let you know at the council meeting.
Okay, councilmember Heims.
Um, doesn't solve the issue that I raised, no.
Okay, okay, um, I, thank you. Uh, I think, I think we're all in agreement that we wanna put this to bed. We wanna get this solved. Um, and uh, and we do, you know, I, I think. I think I can speak for the majority of us all that we, we wanna show our support to the great athletes. That the Gig Harbor canoe and kayak team have, have brought to our community. So, thank you. Councilmember, I'm, I'm sorry, Jeff.
So I just wanna make sure that we talk about uh two other items or at least one other item, which is uh donation amount. Um, right now, the original amendment number two and what council provided direction uh to staff one was in February of. Twenty twenty-one, which was at least ask for a hundred thousand dollars from the race team and the race two, that's what we put in amendment number two that the race team already signed. Uh, but the council rejected and then race team came back and said, well, maybe, and their proposal back to council was one hundred fifty thousand dollars. So. I wanna make sure we talk about the, the, the donation amount and if there are any, any remedies if those donation timeframe for. Providing those donation amounts and any remedies if those timeframes are not met.
Right. I did, when I asked council their thoughts, I did say the hundred and fifty thousand. So they, they did put that in there and uh I think their um. Their penalties if they, if they don't meet it, you know, I, I, actually the hundred and fifty was gonna come before the end of the year. So it was pretty darn quick. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, Jeff, there's already uh accommodation for that in the draft lease that the kayak club presented to us.
Yes, yes, there is. I just wanna make sure that there, there, uh, we didn't have any further input from council if there's any changes from that. But if, if there's no opposition to that, that's what we'll move forward with. It'll, well, Daniel, I can return back with the um revised amendment number two.
So I think most agree, and if you, if you don't agree with uh, with any of the other amendments uh that they did, you know, just raise your hand right now. And um, if you wanna see something different on that, because I think. They, I think you would have expressed that when I a- asked you, but tell me now, tell us now if you feel otherwise. Councilmember Markley.
Um, I don't disagree with any of the um amendments or anything that, but to, to go back to the discussion, just playing devil's advocate. Going back to the discussion of the donation, donation amount, with a fifteen year lease, would you um, with the race? Um, would the racing team feel confident that they could raise more than a hundred and fifty thousand, like if we made it two hundred thousand or? Two hundred and twenty five thousand or would would there be a would there be a higher amount that the kayak team would be willing to help raise with the fifteen year term?
Just a second. He's 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 checking his calculator and his piggy bank. I I do want to make sure when we go to council that we don't just come up with all these other options? Um, that just just cloud the whole issue. We're getting.
I'm not trying to do that. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to cloud anything. I just, you know, Jeff asked us to talk about the donation amount. So I'm bringing it up just to talk about it, just just in case.
Council member Markley, uh, thanks for bringing that up. Can I just get a quick clarifying question? Because it it matters exactly how that's worded for us.
That's, oh, with the um with a fifteen year lease term? Would you be confident that you could raise more than a hundred and fifty thousand and if poss and it and if so, how much do you think you could comfortably? Raise or would agree to comfortably uh be able to raise towards the dock? Since the price has increased from four hundred thousand to, I guess, over seven hundred thousand now.
Sure. Thanks for bringing that up. Um, so we uh we've applied for many grants. And just this last week, um, we signed a contract and received a grant. Um, the details of that contract of that grant have to be? Kept private until the granting association, the granting? Um, party that they get to make the announcement essentially, and they get to be part of that announcement, and that's normal for large grants. So I can't share any of the details, but I think we're going to be able to uh easily make a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I think I think it's looking like we'll be over two hundred thousand at least.
We'll be donating over two hundred thousand.
And uh we're very excited. I I just to mention also, we're working with the granting organization, and we're we're very excited to make that announcement, and uh? We just are working that out with them when and the timing of that.
Legally, we can't uh make any public announcement about the terms of the grant, unfortunately, but we're hoping to make that in the next week. We're very excited. That's really cool. So if we if we have a hundred and fifty thousand in in the lease as the minimum amount? You're still planning on donating more than that if if. We have received, uh, we have received a grant that is in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand? That will be used for dock construction. That's what the grant is for, dock construction.
Yeah, we're really excited, and and if we have fifteen years of incentive, I I believe fifteen years comes out to like three hundred and twenty five or three hundred? So in the range of over three hundred thousand. If we have fifteen years? Of possible lease, we're going to do everything we can to raise and raise as much money as we can towards that.
Great, thank you so much.
Well, great question, council member Markley. I had no idea. I so.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask you, I realize this is public, but I'm going to ask you to?
Right.
Hang 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 loose for a little bit while we get that. I I want to respect the agreement that we have.
True. Yeah, great question, council member Markley. Uh, council member Himes.
Yeah, along that same line, just for clarification there, I I I can't imagine getting a commitment for more? Reimbursement or uh credit toward lease fees than you've got years to spend it. Okay, uh, that is, huh? Where where's the breakpoint here where this thing goes over the over the edge?
Well, because for us, there as an organization, there are more factors than just uh rent credit and the costs. We see a huge benefit um in being able to raise as much money as possible? And pay for as much of this dock as possible. Um, we think that um being able to do that for the community, for the city? Um, is is a big win for us, is a big win for the community. There are factors here that motivate our fundraising goals that are not economic. Council member Himes.
Okay, thank you. Great, well, um? Uh, you know, a lot of us, including myself, have have uh meetings at five o'clock, and so we're we're doing really well. So um are there any other uh in in the same discussion topic? I mean, I'm saying so we don't? We stay with what the study session was. Are there any last uh? Things that council members want to say? Council member Wook.
Yes, thank you. So thank you so much uh to the kayak team. And and when you make this um announcement and when you make all your announcements of all your grants, or if you decide to give more money? To the city, I hope you publicize it well so that all of our community uh understands the um? What you guys are doing for not just for the team, but for the city. Hope you publicize it well so our community can understand you guys even more. Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. So Jeff, um, let's see. So I would think with how the just the minor changes, I know I can't see it on what we did. Can't can't we get this on to June fourteenth?
I think so. Um, I will have a conversation with Daniel Kenny either this evening or tomorrow morning. Uh, let him know the outcome of today's study session, and uh we'll take this along with the version that the team provided us previously. And uh have something ready to go for the June fourteenth meeting.
Great. I do want to say that uh Bob Larson was out of town, so he wasn't planning on being here today. Um, and uh we did reach out to Daniel, and Daniel couldn't make it, could not. So um if, you know, if anyone questions not having legal representation, it's pretty straightforward, but we did see if he was able, and he was not. But Jeff, I believe you answered our questions. Uh, I thank all of you uh for your time? And the club and council, and uh do I have a motion to adjourn? I made a motion. Council member Rodenberg made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of having a good night and journeying?
Hi.
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 All right, take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.